Sounds good. All right, good evening, folks. Let's let's start with tonight's special called Work Session, June 11th, 2024. We have one item for discussion. It is the New Zoning Ordinance RFQ finalist presentation from TBUDC. Do we have anybody present that would like to introduce the presentation?
Bree, can you go back one slide just to the work session slide? The finalist that's here tonight is Mr. Brian Wright. Our selection committee consisted of our staff, our Griggs and Maloney consultant staff, and city manager Tom Darty. We had nine applicants, nine or 10 applicants for the new zoning ordinance RFQ. We've cut that down to four finalists. We interviewed the four finalists, and then our selection committee selected TPUDC as our finalists to present. To you as a board, and then to the Board of Commissioners, who will ultimately sign a contract to get this process moving forward with a rewrite of our zoning ordinance. So tonight, they're here to present a little bit of their experience and background, and talk about some projects that they've done in the past, and kind of what we are looking forward to with moving to a new zoning ordinance. With that, I'll bring Mr. Brian Wright up to the podium, and he's probably going to carry it away for a few minutes with the presentation.
It plugged in and it worked, no problem. It was amazing. I'm impressed with your technology, so. Trying to do something, but right thing, apparently. I'd realize we're the only item on the agenda. We would have just tested it out first.
Well, the workshop agenda. Yeah.
Okay, so after that dramatic prelude, thanks so much for having me tonight. I'm Brian Wright. I'm the Principal of Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative. Just going to run through a hopefully brief presentation, and I don't know if you guys do Q and A or whatever at the end, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have it. So you'll see me a good bit throughout the project, but I'm just one of, part of the team. I get to have the honor of running the firm. Started the firm nearly 20 years ago now. And so we also have my dad, who's Bill Wright. He's our Director of Coding. He's a land use attorney. So luckily, we have him when we're working on these zoning projects around the country. He's right there in the office with us every day. Jessica Wilson is a project director. She'll be heavily involved. Anna as well, Erica, and our graphic designer is Gortza. And then we also brought in our friend Keith Covington, who you all may know from your comp plan and other things he's worked on in the past. So he's been a great resource on some of our other projects, and figured since he had some institutional knowledge here, that he'd be a good addition to the team. Now, if y'all don't like him for whatever reason, he did a bad job, you just let me know. I'll just kick him right off the team, but hopefully, hopefully, he's got a good reputation. He said he did, so. So here's the, kind of the hierarchy of how the, the structure works. We're pretty horizontal. So we'd be working with all of you as kind of the, the boss. Hopefully, we have one point of contact, I'm imagining. And we'll kind of go through that point of contact and get information as we need it. And then we have part of our support team at the bottom, and then, as I said, Keith helping out there. So thankfully for me, I was able to get in the car and drive over here today because we're just down the road in Franklin. But normally, I'm getting on an airplane to go to a meeting. We work all over the country, working on all kinds of projects, zoning codes, comprehensive plans. And we also work on private development projects, which is nice because when we work on a municipal project, on a code or comp plan, the developers come, they're able, you know, we speak their language. We understand kind of what their concerns are, and you know, if they're saying, oh, what about this? What about that? I'm like, oh, I know what you mean. Don't worry about that. Here's how we address it, and that usually helps. So, but we do get to work all over the place, which means that we get to see a lot of things. People are doing really well, and we can bring those lessons back. Things that people aren't doing so well, and we can bring those warnings back. And then we share them with wherever we're working. So this is a few of the, the projects that we've worked on over the past several years. But we always try to, you know, make the, whatever we're doing very interesting, even if it's a zoning code. We try to, try to make that exciting as it can be for the community, and I'll get into that a little bit more. Recently, we did the code for Columbia. We did Franklin's zoning ordinance. We've just wrapped up Nolansville, and we are starting on Gallatin's right now. So apparently, the word got out that we do good codes, which is nice. And so, yeah. Our approach to zoning is we sort of start to look at a few different buckets. Obviously, the community and all of you will tell us what's important to you, but it usually breaks down in kind of the following way. So we look at protecting the most loved areas of the town or the city that we're working in, and then you all kind of identify what those places are. You know, obviously, if we're working in a place that was founded in, you know, 1742 in New England or whatever, and they're all built out, it's a lot easier to put lots of pins on the map. Oh, we love this, we love that, we love this. In a place that's really early on in its growth cycle, it's more like, well, we love these woods over here, and we love these fields over there. And yes, we have a little bit of some development that we like over here. But a lot of times, protecting isn't the, the top priority, just depending on where, where we're working. Maintaining stable neighborhoods, I don't think we've been to a place yet where they said, we really want to upset the apple cart and do something totally different in all of our existing stable neighborhoods. So we try to tread lightly when it comes to the existing neighborhoods. Enhancing areas that need improvement, again, that's pretty self-evident. Transforming underutilized properties, a lot of times we're called in, and I'll show you some examples in a minute, where communities kind of gotten headed down the path, like the place I grew up. It's a city in the Birmingham area, and I think it was founded in like 1968 or some, I don't know what, but pretty recent. And, you know, they're like, well, we don't really have any historic part. We, you know, have all just conventional sort of suburban development, strip malls and all of that. But we'd like to have a heart of the town, you know, as you guys have embarked upon yourselves. And so sometimes what we're asked to do is actually start to transform some of those areas that are more suburban into something that is more walkable. Other times, it's sort of like the stable neighborhoods where, hey, let's just leave that alone. It's functioning, we need that type of use or whatever. So again, we get our marching orders and our instructions from you all in the community as we go. Whenever we're working on zoning ordinance, what we tend to find is that community members, citizens come out when new development sign pops up, you know, rezoning or whatever, and they're worried automatically because they don't know what's going to happen, right? Even if you have a zoning ordinance, how many of them spend time really studying or reading it? And even if they do, it's often very confusing. And then furthermore, you may not have to follow the zoning ordinance because it's going to be a PUD or whatever the thing is in the community we're working at. So they don't know. It's a negotiated process. And so usually what we try to do is we go through and work on a zoning ordinance is to create predictable outcomes so that you all know what you're going to get when you approve something. Planning staff and everybody, you know, the different departments knows what they're going to be expecting. And the citizens know what they're going to need to expect, and so they can not be so concerned. We also look to try to provide something for everyone. So many times, we work in communities where there will either be a, an anti-growth sentiment or a pro-growth sentiment. And it's like whichever camp you're in, it's one or the other. And what we always say is, well, it's fine, you know, you have your preference, and so let's make sure there's a place for you. But then maybe your son or daughter, your kid, you know, they may have a different preference, and they might want to move back to town or whatever the case may be. And so let's make sure that there's that opportunity as well, and sort of everything in between. What that means is you're not putting all your eggs in one basket, right? So as you're looking at your economic sustainability over time, you haven't said, well, like for instance, we were working in, in New Hampshire in a community one time, and they were prided themselves on being a one-acre community. We're one-acre zoning, that's what we do. And I said, okay, you know, great. And what we figured out was that in that town, there was nowhere for you to go once you decided to downsize. You didn't want to, or couldn't take care of your house, or you couldn't drive. If you couldn't afford home health care, then you literally had to leave town because all they had was one-acre lots with a big house on it. And it hadn't occurred to people. They were fighting tooth and nail for this one-acre zoning. And then I asked them, I said, well, how did you all decide on one-acre zoning? I don't really know. That's kind of how it was when we moved in, and we really liked that. And so I dug into it a bit more, and I figured out that one acre was the minimum lot size they could put a septic field on. And so they had planned their whole town based on dealing with the waste. And everybody thought it was this sort of a lifestyle choice that they had made, but really, it was a sewage choice. So, so anyway, some of those kind of things as we go through, understanding like, okay, well, maybe it shouldn't be all one-acre lots. Maybe it should be some 10-acre lots. Maybe it should be some quarter or 10th acre lots, whatever. Figure that out together as a community, and you all help us, you know, figure out what y'all, what y'all want to be, where you want to go. We see zoning as an economic development tool. For so long, you know, cities that are big enough to have an economic development department or somebody whose job it is to recruit businesses, they really just focused on industrial parks, maybe an office park. But industrials are sort of the easy thing, and a big bang for your buck. And what we see now is there's, there's a place for that, you know. But also, when you look at an example like Franklin, right? Where they've got Cool Springs, and it's an economic engine. But the question became when we were working on the zoning ordinance, there would it have been if not for downtown Franklin? And now that Cool Springs is of a certain age, it's getting a bit dated, a bit not popular with what people are looking for with, you know, and they're looking, moving headquarters here or setting up offices or business or whatever. So how do they, you know, they're looking at, well, what's the next iteration? How do we transform that? And so there, you know, things we had to do to, for an economic development purpose that specifically spawned from the zoning ordinance. So also cleaning up existing issues. Any place that's had a zoning ordinance for more than about two years has some sort of patches, little things. Somebody came in and they said, oh, yeah, you know, I'm here to complain tonight at this, this podium, and my neighbors' chickens are keeping me up all, they wake me up early, they've got roosters or whatever. And they said, how big is their lot? Oh, it's like, you know, 2.5 acres. Okay, well, let's make an ordinance that says you can't have chickens unless you have greater than 2.5 acres. And you're like, whoa, what in the world? And you look at this ordinance, and it's very specific and random things that have been piecemealed over time. So we have to go in and kind of clean up some of those things. And, you know, maybe it was not the best thing to zone it for just that one issue, or that one instance. But maybe there's a bigger picture thing that we can sort out as we go through. And then lastly, having it be easy to use and administer. Most of the time, zoning ordinances are very, very dense, lots of words, as they need to be. You know, it's telling you what you can and can't do and all that. But they're not written for an average property owner to understand. They're written for their attorney or for their consultant to understand, which means then it sort of takes it out, like if you, if you're not doing a big development, you're kind of out of luck because who's got money to go hire an attorney or consultant just to figure out, well, I can't do that with my lot? So, so there's that side of things, so making it easy to use for the, for a user. But also from a developer, professional developer's perspective, you wouldn't believe how many places we work where they're just like, we have no idea what this zoning ordinance is trying to say. Our consultants are looking at it, our attorneys are looking at it. This is crazy. And then we talk to staff, and they're like, yeah, we know, we agree. Where did this come from? And so we need to clean that up. And so we go through and try to make sure that it's easy to use and easy to administer. So one of the things that we do to help people discuss planning, or zoning, sorry, is looking at planning as we go through the process. Because when you say to somebody, hey, you know, what do you think the, the use ought to be, or the setback, or the building height ought to be over here in town? And they're like, I don't know. I hadn't really thought about it before. And okay, let me think about that. And then they say, well, I think, you know, I kind of like that over there. That looks like that's about 40 feet high. Oh, is it really? Is it really 40 feet high? I don't know. So let's figure it out. And so trying to find a way that people can really respond to something and to say like, okay, this is an example of a community where they wanted to transform the suburban highway. And they were saying, you know, they hadn't already taken the steps that you all had to create a town center. They said, look, can we make a town center kind of thing here? Make it walkable, make it bikeable. They want to do some cool stuff with storm waters, or how do we incorporate that? And so we drew a plan and did a rendering. And they said, wow, that's exactly what we were talking about. That's great. Or, ah, that's a bit urban for us. That feels a bit, that doesn't feel like our town. So how do we change that? And so now we can say, well, what about it doesn't, what about it feels too urban? Well, we weren't imagining three-story buildings. Or maybe originally, we had drawn it as four, and we took it down to three. And so we can talk about that stuff. And then people can also, I mean, who, until I just showed you that image, could you have imagined that I could turn that into that? And so, you know, most people just haven't been exposed to these ideas. And so we're trying, helping people visualize and see. So this was, this is actually in Franklin. There's a little neighborhood, little, little church. There's neighborhoods there off the side. There's a little strip center with a great little Mexican restaurant. And, you know, the city wanted to make these neighborhood centers like you'd see in historic towns, and not just have Main Street or downtown in Franklin, but a neighborhood center. It's a little bit of mixed use. And so we showed how that could transform. And so that weird little triangle at the end became this cool park. And then the buildings kind of pulled up there and had, you know, a little mixed use. And the strip center kind of came up to the street there, and now the, the street feels more walkable. The parking's in the back, and all of these things, and it feels like a different kind of place. And so that's transformative. This was an old factory and dog food plant in Spartanburg. And they said, what do we do with this old abandoned factory? There were some existing neighborhoods around it, and they wanted to kind of tie in together and show a mix of different housing types and stuff. And so we showed how it could become this really active and vibrant area. They wanted, in this community, they wanted to do incubator businesses so people could start a business real small, maybe in a little kiosk or a booth or whatever. And so we showed how they could work that out. They want to have community gardens. We showed how that could look, on and on and on. But what you see in this image is adaptive reuse of the, of the old factory building. Then we have the incubator stuff. Then we have new mixed-use buildings. And then as you move to the bottom right-hand side of the image, you start to see, they said, we want to have some townhouses. We want to have some small, single-family houses. And it's kind of everything in this one area. And you kind of transition, and it meets up with the historic neighborhood that's right next to it. It all fits in seamlessly in a way that people could respond to. And they said, well, that's maybe too dense. Okay, great. So here's what we do. We can pop out a few things and make it feel like, you know, and sort of calibrate it to what people think is appropriate in their community. And we've got, you know, other examples where it's like, you know, a farm, right? How many times do you see a farm, and the farm's being transformed and, you know, to a new subdivision? It's like, okay, well, are we excited about that? Maybe there's some tax benefit to it, maybe not, depending on where we are. But if we are going to have development, what if we were as excited about development as we were in love with the farm that we lost as a result of it? And so we can show how that, how to do that, too. So when we talk about zoning these days, sort of best practices in zoning is, you know, originally zoning was all set up kind of to separate one use from the next. So this, what people refer to as Euclidean zoning, because it was a city of Euclid Court case that kind of started this whole thing. But the idea was that there weren't environmental protections in place in the way that there are now. So you really did need to separate things. People might actually die because they're being polluted or poisoned or whatever. So they separated. Today, it's not as important to separate uses in that way. And so what we talk about is the idea of character, right? Some uses, yes, still need to. Like you probably don't want a Amazon distribution center in the middle of your neighborhood, right? Those sorts of things. But in general, if you look at a historic place, how many different things happened in every single little building that there was? You know, if it's been there for any time, like Main Street in any town. There was a general store, and maybe first it was a delivery stable, and now it's the general store. And then it became on and on, and it changes. And so how do you allow for that change to happen and not have purpose-built kind of places? So what we do is create a hybrid zoning code, what we call it. So we're incorporating the idea of character, but we're also still having uses in there. And so that's what we did recently in Nolansville and a lot of other places. Here's some examples from, in Portsmouth, where, is my time up? Funny, he's like, you can go on through with your bag. And I was like, okay. And then it did that, and he just laughed. And I was like, you do that on purpose, don't you? He just, so it's entertainment for the night. So, so here, here's a use table in this zoning code, right? And so that is, it goes from being the first, most important thing to like the sixth, the most important thing is why I say it. But, you know, we also have, you know, conventional subdivisions that are already there, as we talked about, the established ones. So how do we, how do we put that in a format that's easy to use? It's visual, it's graphical, has all the standards in there. But, you know, kind of keeps it as it is, as status quo. And then we have other areas that maybe you want to have in a new development. And we say, here's how we want new development to be in our community. But graphically, they're laid out the same, so it's easy to use and administer in the document. And this is an example of actually a hybrid development project where in the back, you have a large, sort of big box, retail center. But up front, and as you enter, it nearly feels like a Main Street. And so that, the project itself is a hybrid. Here's some examples from that Portsmouth project we talked about. This is a new building that was built under the zoning code there. Again, don't mind the architecture, this is a bit New England. But you sort of calibrate that in your mind to what's southern and would be appropriate here in Fairview. But it's impressive that it's a new building nonetheless. This is a before, and this is not something that's built under our code. This is before, and they wanted, they needed new townhouses in this community. And so this was a townhouse that they built. A lot of times when we're working in a community, they say, well, we don't want townhouses. And the reason that they don't want townhouses is, one, there's a general apprehension about density. But two, typically, a townhouse today is sort of a attached building set in a parking lot, sort of set back. There's the, the house, but no town, right? But used to, townhouses kind of did this kind of thing, right? Another example here, in the same area, and again, some townhouses there. There's a single-family house right behind it that fits right in as well. This was a big private development zoning project. It was 80,000-acre private development project outside of Charleston. And so we did a, we wrote this zoning code using these same strategies for that, that, because it's really a region, 80,000 acres. It's like you say, well, we're going to do a site tour, and it takes half an hour to drive across the site. You know, it's one of those things. But here's some of the built results, right? And so it's a great little, you know, walkable neighborhood with a neighborhood center, and, you know, sort of very reminiscent of a historic southern town, and that's what they wanted in this area. So how do we do that? And then before I started my firm, I worked on West Haven, if you know West Haven in Franklin. So I worked for the, the firm that did the master plan for it originally, and then I worked for the developer of it. And then I've lived there now for 20 years, and that's where our office is as well. And so, you know, some people say, oh, this is amazing. Like when we did the zoning ordinance in Franklin, what's your favorite development in Franklin? West Haven number one by far, and then Berry Farms number two. And people couldn't even think of the names of other subdivisions in the area. Now, some people will come into West Haven, and they go, oof, that's too tight. I don't know, I've got dogs. Where am I going to run my dog? You know, I don't want to be able to see my neighbor on the porch. Like I want to be out in the, in the back 40 or whatever, which is, again, back to that idea of something for everyone. But before, West Haven was built in Franklin, it was all either farms or conventional subdivisions that were sort of repetitive, like one-acre lot or whatever the case may be, over and over and over. And so now you have the choice to be in one, or the other, or the other. So let's see, what else we got for you guys?
Mr. Wright?
Yes?
If I could, if there's a way that we could get to within five minutes?
Sure.
If you can maybe just conclude on this piece and give us a chance to have some Q and A?
Yeah, absolutely. I didn't know how long you all wanted me to talk.
Planning Commission meeting, so that'll, that'll help us make sure that we get some interaction as well, please. Thank you.
I wouldn't have been so elaborative on all these things if I wasn't. So one of the things that's important in many, most of the communities we work in today is public outreach and engagement. We want people to get on board through the process. We know that people are distracted. They've got stuff going on. 50% of people won't ever attend a public meeting. I don't know what y'all's meetings look like, but that's what a lot, most of them look like. So this is one of ours. And so we try to get people, you know, we want them to be interested enough to take a picture of the screen. So we have a whole bunch of tools to communicate, to reach out to people, to get people aware of what's going on. And again, it's zoning, right? And so how many people are you going to get to come out to talk about zoning? Hopefully, a good number, but it's, it's one of the most challenging things. But we'll have a website that so people can keep up to date with what's going on. We'll do digital postcards and posters that can be sent out and put around town. Hopefully, we can deputize some people in the community who have people's ear already and say, hey, you got to come check out. This is important, what we're doing now for our future. We'll create a whole, what we call a Planet Palooza or Code Palooza. So we'll actually set up our office here for several days. I'll bring my team in, and it'll be all open to the public. People can come in and sort of big format meetings, smaller meetings of, you know, specific technical topics. We'll have presentations, and we'll create all the things, the plans and renderings and things that I was just showing you. We create it real time, and people can come and participate at their, at their will. And so this is what we want. You know, this was a, a community where they're known for making signs, saying, I can't believe we elected you, get out of town, you know, whatever. And this was at the end of our Planet Palooza there. They made these signs, so we're thankful for that. So at the end of the day, I mentioned to you that we work all over the country. We work all over the country. And so what we want to make sure we do is not just import something from New Hampshire, or Vermont, or Texas, or wherever we're working, that it is for all of you, your code. So we have something for everyone, for the policymakers, all of you, for the communities, the citizens, participating businesses, people at all stages of life, so you can be a generational, multi-generational community. For visitors, you know, want to have visitors come because they leave their tax dollars and they go home. And so that's nice, too. You know, having it work for the development community, you know, without the developers, you're stuck where you are, which may be okay. You know, makes it, we want to write a code that makes it where nothing happens here. Well, we'll see. But most importantly, it's got to have the essence of Fairview. It can be our code, my code, it has to be y'all's code, so. Timeline, where are we? So we are here, I think. We've got a kickoff meeting coming in the fall. And then there's the Code Palooza that I mentioned, also fall. And we will basically create, after we get all that public input, we'll create a client draft, we'll deliver it to staff. They'll look over it, make sure we hadn't done anything wacky, or, you know, it's nothing unexpected that we missed. They'll give us comments. Then we will revise the code based on the draft, based on that, and create the public draft, which goes out to the whole community. Then there's a, you know, usually a 30-day period, and they can review it and give comments as well. Staff will consolidate those comments, get it back to us, and then we'll create the adoption draft. And that'll be in the summer, in the summer of 2025. And then hopefully, adoption there in the fall of 2025. So there you go, five minutes, done. Thank you for that.
Thank you. How about any comments, questions from the Planning Commission, Mr. Wright?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
I just would like to see everything changed from P O D to P U D.
You just like U better than O?
In my opinion, it should have never been changed.
Okay.
So that's my input.
That's very specific on the first comment. That's great, thank you for that.
I have a question. With all the times you've done this, how much have you looked at our existing code? And do you see it as a, excuse me, a full rewrite? Or, you know, obviously, we have a master plan. There's a lot of pieces tied together and things of that nature. So, you know, do you do it as a full rewrite and just start over? Or do you see it as take our code and make modifications to it?
Yeah, I mean, even when like the task at hand, like people say, we need a full rewrite. And that's, there's not even the question. Like they tell us that's what we're doing. There's always a certain amount of starting with what you've got, right? And sort of saying, okay, well, what's working for you, what's not? Usually, we'll start off with getting a list of like your most common variances or whatever the process is, you know, where people are asking for, you know, relief from the ordinance. And a lot of times, that'll tell us either, one, you've got the sort of